I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission Special Meeting of October 21st, 2021 to order. It is 7:09 a.m. And real quickly, 7:09 p.m. Wow. Why did I say that? Looking from my left to my right, I see we have a full commission this evening, but we don't have any sort of a necessity to seat any alternates at this point in time. We will start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And, very good. We have an executive session first, and I was just going to say that I have read and reviewed the entire record. I will just put that out there that I have done that, I've completed that.
For the regular meeting.
For the regular meeting, okay. So not yet. All right, so we're going to do executive session first. Executive session, somebody.
I will make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second. Including the town attorney and the executive.
Second was Ann. All those in favor, say aye.
And Mr. Mahoney.
You're going to invite us to stay.
Very good.
Public cannot stay.
Yeah. So at this point, the public, we are going to start with an executive session regarding another item, another topic altogether, and then we're going to start up with our regular meeting shortly thereafter. So we're just going to ask anyone from the public to step outside temporarily, very temporarily. Thank you.
It's not 7:00.
You're rolling.
Do we have to wait this long, or?
Yeah.
No, we started this up.
Regular meeting.
Because this is a special meeting for 7:00. We do got to wait 10:00? I don't think so, but.
No. We called this meeting for 7:00.
I think we're good, yeah.
No, we're good.
Because we're going right after you.
Yes.
Moving on to the regular meeting, which is the discussion and possible decision on Public Act 21-29 regarding proposed amendments to General Statute 8-2 to allow accessory dwelling units as of right on each lot that contains a single-family dwelling. Said amendment is to become effective January 1st, 2022. And I'll just note, as I did already, that I have reviewed and read the record from 10/14 in its entirety, and would like to start off tonight's meeting, or tonight's discussion, by having Attorney Zamarka refresh us and perhaps fill us in on any new information based on his research and further review of the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Mark Zamarka, Waller Smith &amp; Palmer, Town Council. The members will probably recall, a couple weeks ago, one kind of overriding question was if the zoning commission decided to opt out, could it then adopt its own regulations that were stricter than what were contained in 2129? First thing to remember, the opt-out is a two-step process. If this commission decides to opt out, it still has to be, for lack of a better term, ratified by the Board of Selectmen by the same two-thirds vote. The short answer, and I took a stab at this last week, I said, my initial thought, without going to do the research, was you could not go any stricter than the law, and it turns out that is the case. The way it works is this, and it's, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, simply because it's very easy to get turned around even explaining it, so I just want to try to make it as clear and straightforward as I can. There is a statute that allows a zoning commission to make or impose higher standards than those in a statute. However, if you do that, it is still subject to something that is called preemption. Preemption very briefly states that the state legislature's will cannot be overridden by a local zoning regulation. That happens in two instances. First, if the state legislature intended to do what's called occupying the field, meaning we're going to regulate everything such that there's really nothing for the locality to do, or if the local regulation conflicts irreconcilably, and I had to practice saying that, with the state statute, then the state statute will control. Here, we believe that, and this is what we've advised the other towns we represent also, that Section 6E specifically of 2129 shows a legislative intent to occupy the field. What it says basically is that if the municipality does not opt out or adopt regulations that comply with the act, then any noncompliant regulations are considered null and void, and specifically, and the one that really makes the rubber hit the road here, is that a municipality may not use or impose additional standards beyond those set forth in the act. That, pretty much right there, as far as we are concerned, and based on our research, shows that the legislature intended that it was this or not. It's a take it or leave it.
So we can't come up with a regulation that says only in certain zones?
If it goes beyond what is in here, that's correct. And right now, 2129 allows accessory dwelling units on any lot that has a single-family dwelling.
So we can't narrow it down to?
Correct.
Like a three-acre zone?
Correct. That's correct. That's, well, let me stop. You can, okay? You are a zoning commission, you have the statutory right to adopt regulations. However, those would be subject to challenge in a court, and I do not think, we do not think, based on our research, that it would survive that challenge. It would not be advisable to do so. It would be against our recommendation.
You'll never win anything with a liberal judge in today's courts.
It's, I don't think it has anything to do with that. These are principles of statutory construction. They're pretty well set, as far as these go, and here you do have the legislature stating right in black and white, you can't do anything beyond what is in here, beyond, over and above.
Where is that in here?
That is Section 6E of the act.
6, 7E?
I'm sorry. So let me see. Let me see which one you have, Mr. Mahoney.
But it's Section 6.
Section 6.
Section 7E.
Is it 7?
Could you read the whole thing for everybody?
Section 6, um, 7.
Oh, it's 7E, pardon me. Sorry. Yes, it's 7, my mistake.
Section 6, 7E.
Yes.
Just read that whole thing.
Sure.
Rather than just cut and paste.
Okay. "If a municipality fails to adopt new regulations or amend existing regulations by January 1, 2023 for the purpose of complying with the provisions of subsection A to D inclusive of this section, and unless such municipality opts out of the provisions of said subsections in accordance with the provisions of subsection F of this section, any noncompliant existing regulation shall become null and void, and such municipality shall approve or deny applications for accessory apartments in accordance with the requirements for regulations set forth in the provisions of subsection A to D inclusive of this section until such municipality adopts or amends a regulation in compliance with said subsections. A municipality may not use or impose additional standards beyond those set forth in subsections A to D inclusive of this section."
Let me ask you this. I believe at the last special meeting, we asked you to somewhat come up with a preliminary temporary regulation. Did you guys do that?
No, we didn't have time. No, we did not do that, no. Because, because.
Based on the additional information.
At that point, it was, sorry. Sorry. At that point, it was still an open question as to whether or not that was something that was even possible to do.
Now, would a regulation like this affect other towns that have such regulations in place already?
Well, what it says is if you have an accessory dwelling unit regulation, it has to comply with this, it has to comply with the act by January 1 of 2023.
So there's nothing prohibiting us from coming up with regulations that comply with these?
No. No, that's your choice. And the only action that, well, I shouldn't say the only action that's required, the only action that is needed right now is whether or not to decide to opt out. If you choose to opt out, then that process begins. If you don't, then as of January 1 of next year, this regulation takes effect. And you essentially have a year to come up with regulations that comply with this. If not, as of January 1, 2023, any regulations that are on the books now that don't comply are considered null and void.
So this regulation was passed in, I believe, the beginning of June?
I believe it was enacted sometime.
In June?
Could be.
And here it is in October, and we are hearing of it just now. So the time to where if the board did choose to come up with a set of regulations, now we only have, what, two weeks with this commission?
No, because, no, 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 not at all. Because the law takes effect January 1 of 2022. Any regulations you come up with have to be in compliance with the act, with what's set forth in the act.
Correct.
So until you did come up with something that met the requirements of the act, the provisions of the act would control.
And if we don't decide to opt out, automatically this coming January, the applications can come in, we have to approve them.
That's correct. And you do have until January 1 of 2023 to opt out.
Yeah.
But again.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to pick up on that. So we have to, it's not an automatic stand to prove, those requests have to comply with our existing zoning regulations, as long as they're, right, we had this discussion, that was the crux of our discussion, that the applications for ADUs still have to comply with our basic zoning regulations.
Yes.
I think that was the discussion we had last, whatever that was.
Yeah, but they also have to, they're also judged under the standards set forth in the act.
So are there any penalties for opting out?
No. And the one thing I should mention, too, is in terms of the legislative intent to occupy the field, I was able to do some research to see that the opt-out was put in specifically because that was the only way the legislature apparently was going to get the act through. So it's clear that, you know, based on the language, based on the legislative history that we've been able to see, that they intended a town, you either comply or you opt out, there's no in-between.
What about, we have a regulation that describes building something in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood. Can that still apply, in your opinion?
What 2129 says is that you can't apply architectural or design standards that are any different than what would be applied to the principal dwelling on the law.
So it's a landscape, architecture, science, cannot exceed those applied principles. Basically, you've got to match.
So if somebody comes in with a camp trailer, we can disallow it? No.
I think so.
That's, that's.
That's actually not classified as a dwelling.
Yeah, that's a vehicle. I think we talked about this last time.
Yeah, making mobile.
Yeah, they're, I, these speak to structures, because you have either something that's attached, detached, or contained within the principal dwelling. And based on that definition, I don't think a trailer would fit.
Well, a trailer park, you take the wheels off, you put the skirts in, put it, put in a septic system.
Yeah, but those aren't, those aren't single-family dwellings.
Well, on the contrary, though. Let me just throw this out. My recollection, and I don't recall what part of the statute, is manufactured homes, and you may recall some of that. To travel on the road have to be at least 22-foot wide with their manufactured homes. Take the wheels off, you put them on blocks, you're in, you're done, that's a home. We have, and our minimum home size doesn't apply unless we opt out, is that correct?
But the maximum square footage is 1,000.
Yeah, the maximum square footage on an accessory dwelling.
You're looking at it like you guys want to opt out, okay? What I'm looking at here is regulations from other towns to where they are allowed. So my question to you, Mr. Mahoney, did you contact the southeastern Connecticut Council of Government?
No.
So you did not ask for how it would impact our town? Is that what I understand correctly?
No, that's not something I would normally do, to call them and ask them how it would or would impact our community.
We do it for other things, why don't we do it for something like this?
Because there's no referral required, so it's not something we do.
Are you able to apply rules like you can't have a business in the dwelling, or the owner has to live in one of them, or, I mean, there's so many things.
So, right, all right, understood.
I actually can answer that, if you don't mind. The answer is yes.
I'd like to hear.
Because we can come up with our own regulation.
I'd rather have the attorneys answer, yes or not.
Seems like it's one way.
So the act does not allow a town to require there to be any type of relationship between who lives in the principal dwelling and who lives in the accessory?
So someone could own both units and rent them both out, and not live in either one?
It's possible. Yeah. Yeah. Because the only requirement is that it's allowed on a lot where there is a single-family dwelling.
And can you dictate where it is that it has to be in the backyard?
Well, as I say, there's, there might be some wiggle room as far as that, but in terms of coming up with, you know, because the question was, can we make our own regulation that is stricter or in contravention of this, and the answer to that is no. There may be some wiggle room on some things, yeah, I mean, I doubt the legislative intent was to have, you know, little tiny homes on front yards.
I don't, no, I don't, I think this bill allows too many things. You can't restrict them enough.
I asked a question last time, and this is related to a public hearing, related to one of our charges, which is the preservation of property values, okay? The question was, you were going to check on it, if we can have this use be subject to a public hearing by special permit.
Oh, yeah, no, that is not allowed.
No.
No, no, the accessory dwelling unit is allowed as of right. It cannot be subject to a special permit, it cannot be subject to a public hearing.
Okay.
You get it whether you like it or not.
It's considered as of right, so.
And we're asking, Terry, we're asking these questions out of concern, not that we're trying to railroad it in any direction, these are concerning questions. Thank you.
For me, there's a lot more questions than answers here, that's the problem, and I think that's kind of what I'm hearing, and, you know, and I ask myself, just in reviewing the record and doing some reading myself on the topic online, just to really try to familiarize myself and try to get a better global perspective. I mean, we have a housing crisis in this state, and perhaps nationally, due to, you know, wages haven't kept pace with inflation, and that's sort of the genesis of all this, and it begs for solutions, but I think that, you know, this is not the solution, this isn't the right solution, this even, isn't even part of the right solution, from my point of view. You know, to use a sports analogy, you have coached a lot of sports, this is like the offensive coordinator drawing up a play up in the skybox that makes no sense, and you don't have the personnel on the field to even run the play to begin with. So, I mean, that's what I see. You know, and again, the rhetorical question for me is, how is this commission to agree to, with a loosening of restrictions, which is essentially what this does, in the face of a situation where we have difficulty, as it is now, enforcing, you know, these types of restrictions? So, and that's certainly not a knock on our good zoning official or anybody else, he wears about four hats as it is right now, so I mean, it's just, you know, logistically, I see so many, so many problems with this, I mean, we could go through them, I took the time to come up with a list. I've read pro and con in terms of how it affects property values. I'm a glass-half-full guy, generally, I'm an optimist by nature, but I don't believe, I don't believe it would help, or, I think it would adversely affect property values in this town.
It's guaranteed.
That's my belief. You know, I'll say it out loud, it might not be a politically correct thing to say, but single-family home neighborhoods are sort of sacrosanct in this town. That's why people move to this town. And I think if we dismiss that, we're not really reading the tea leaves, we're not paying attention to what the residents feel in this town, or the reasons that they moved here to begin with. It's the reason I moved here, I've lived here most of my life. When my wife and I married, we lived elsewhere for a short while, and we came back here. I came back here because I knew what Eastline represented and what it would be for me.
I agree with you, Chairman.
And I, quite honestly, I certainly don't think it would be a great move politically, and we're not here to talk about politics, to make this your campaign slogan. I wouldn't go door-to-door making this my campaign slogan unless I wanted to get beat pretty soundly. I mean, traffic, on-street parking, the policing of on-street parking on our streets, by putting this in every zone, I mean, I just, I just started coming, you know, coming up with a list, public safety, drainage, septic systems, just a greater drain on septic systems, loss of privacy. If you did have, if you did have a detached unit on somebody's front yard, probably not the best example, but.
Driveways, still a wide driveway.
From a privacy standpoint, sightlines, people looking in each other's windows, it could change the way this town looks, potentially. And maybe I'm authorizing it or thinking worst-case scenario, but I mean, you have to, as elected officials, we really got to think in terms of the greater good and not in terms of what might be beneficial to a particular individual or certain individuals who have a situation where they, they might need this. But as a total community, I don't think this is anything that is going to enhance the town of Eastline, or that it's in our best interests. To me, it's an offshoot of affordable housing, to be quite frank, and I'm for affordable housing, I've been on this commission since 2009, and we've done a lot of work in that regard. We've filled that void, and we need to fill it more. We need to fill it more. 38 Hope Street, for one, we got the Rocky Neck Project, I think 50-plus units there. Oswego Gachi Hills, although they're, you know, they're backs to the wall at the present moment, potentially, I'll just put it out there like that, I'm not up for reelection. 800-plus units, 800, potentially 800-plus units. We've got the elderly housing that are essentially low-income elderly housing, so, you know, we're meeting those objectives, we've met those objectives since I've been on this commission in 2009, we've been sensitive to it, and we understand we're still deficient in that regard, but this isn't the answer.
I agree, I wrote down a list, too. Because we can't put more restrictions on it, I would vote to opt out.
I'm in favor of voting to opt out, I just, I don't think that this is the right, listen, it's not a waste, you know?
It's a waste. For something that came out in June.
It's inappropriate, it's inappropriate for you to talk over people constantly and think that everybody's out to get you, or everybody, there's some hidden agenda, or there's an ulterior motive here, that couldn't be any further from the truth.
No.
I mean, I'll cite last week's meeting, we had an application before us for a text amendment on recreational marijuana establishments. I had to look at that with an open mind, I had to embrace that to a certain degree, I felt it was the right thing to do for the town. I wasn't in favor of recreational marijuana being legalized in the first place. So we all have to come to terms with our own decisions, and we all have to come to terms with our own judgments as commissioners, as residents, hopefully here, we're acting as commission members, but those are my feelings, and I have a right to that perspective and those feelings.
Well, me, I agree.
Thank you.
As do I.
You absolutely do.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
I've said my piece.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the attorney a question?
Sure.
Can you just remind us, if we opt out, what, if anything, does the commission or the town need to do?
The opt-out process goes like this. If that's something that the commission chooses to do, it has to do so by a two-thirds vote, and the reasons for that vote have to be stated on the record. Just in aid of that, I have drafted a draft motion and resolution, obviously leaving any reasons blank if that's the path the commission decided to do. Also in the resolution, it's, it contains a recommendation that the Board of Selectmen act accordingly when this goes to them. So it has to, to answer your question, I'm trying, they, you have to, this commission has to affirmatively vote by a two-thirds margin, four to two, to opt out, and then the Board of Selectmen also has to do so by a two-thirds vote.
And, so, take us past the vote, let's play out the scenario that it's four to two, because I think it's going to be four to two, and let's assume the Selectmen also vote for it. By opting out, then the town does nothing else, we need to do nothing else, and any of our citizens in town cannot develop an ADU.
That's correct. That's correct. It would not be.
I just want to make it really clear what's going to happen if we vote.
The ramifications.
The ramifications, because we.
There's no ramifications, everything stays as is.
Well, but we have public hearings for a reason.
You do.
Okay? We have public hearings for a reason, and that's to hear from the constituents, the residents of this town, to understand what their needs are, what their concerns are. And if you, if you were here and you listened, or if you read the minutes that were available, there was a lot of residents articulating their need or their desire for this type of dwelling, for their family situations. We still have zoning regulations that any ADU would have to be developed with, so.
Let me stop a second, I apologize. Only if, if they are in compliance with 2129, if they are counter to that, the local regulations would be superseded.
Okay, but, yeah, so.
Just want to make sure.
I understand, but if they're in compliance with 2129, and they're in compliance with our zoning regulations, then the development would happen. But in our zoning regulations, we have things like setbacks, we have all kinds of protections in our zoning regulations. So I understand that 30, 40, 50 years ago, families moved into this community for a reason, and they developed communities for a reason. My concern is that without the vision of what families are dealing with today, and what families are going to need to be, continue to need, as we move further into this century, I think we have to be ready for that. There are needs out there that are not being met, and we have residents in our community that are struggling, and I don't know that opting out does anything to help solve that problem. Our economy is changing, our workforce is changing, our family units are changing, and I think for us to act in fear and just opt out is not a responsible thing for this commission to do.
Thank you.
I disagree with you.
I understand that.
I just want to be verbal.
You have a right to do that.
Another question, let's say this board decides, okay, we're going to allow two family dwellings in a zone that now doesn't have only but one family allowed. Does that enter into this picture at all? I don't think so.
No, I don't believe it would.
Okay. I, this affordable housing thing that's been going on for the last 20 years in the state of Connecticut has been pretty much of a failure.
Yes.
The state, well, the formula to qualify for affordable housing puts a person into a position that they do not qualify for a loan to buy the unit. It doesn't work. That's why all over town, you see affordable housing projects full of elderly people, people that are retired, they cashed in in Fairfield County, or in Black Point, or wherever, they have a bunch of cash, they have no income, so they qualify, and they qualify for, they don't even need a loan. So these, all these projects are loaded with mostly, if you ask any developer, that's what's been happening. The state of Connecticut doesn't know how to solve that problem, so they come down with the easy way, which they typically do, the easy solution, mandate, okay? You're all going to do this, but surprisingly, they're giving us an opt-out option. I think this is absolute clear-cutting way of doing business. I think this is absolute clear-cutting way of doing business. They have no business, this clear-cutting type of regulation statute. I was very interested in coming up with, joining a subcommittee, and coming up with a custom-fit regulation that solves, or helps to solve, the problem. And we could have done that, but since we have no control, and we've got to go along with this statute anyway, it's useless. So, I think we could, we might be able to still form a subcommittee and come up with, for example, allow two-family in another zone, we could talk about that. Maybe there's a couple of things we could do within the law. But this, I think, is not a good thing for any town. Every town should be able to custom-fit their regulations, and I think the state should reconsider and allow us to do this on our own, without this mandate. So, I'm against it, because of the answers I received tonight, that we just don't have any control if we don't opt out.
I agree with that rationale.
Anybody else?
I just, where does it exactly say that, you know, you cannot be more strict than that? I know on the little cut sheet that you gave us, it says that...
Well, that's the idea of the mandate.
Where in 2129 does it state that?
Section 7E, the one I read in...
That's what we read, yeah.
It's the last sentence. "Municipality may not use or impose additional standards beyond those set forth in subsections A to D inclusive of this section."
Maybe just in layman's language, just one more, just brief, quick explanation of what and why, and just to answer Terry's question.
Well, also, I'm just curious, because, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't know if people are in the know of that, we did try this before. I don't, I believe it was, obviously it was on a different administration here, but to where there was a proposal for accessory apartments and such, for this town. I agree with Norm in the fact saying that, you know, the state basically is telling you what to do. And I also agree with the affordable housing thing, which is horrible, to where one-third of a project has to meet the affordable housing, and the other two-thirds don't. And we're just going to keep growing with the population, we're never going to be able to meet that. And I've expressed that before to Mr. Mahalan, and that's just sad. So, it's kind of disturbing to me as well, and to where, you know, like, as mentioned at last meeting, where we have Millstone, we have General Dynamics and all that stuff. I actually ran into a couple gentlemen who are at Millstone, and they're staying in a hotel, you know, so... If we had something like this in our regulations, to where they could have, you know, an accessory-use apartment, as you may say, or an ADU, you may say, you're going to pay, don't worry. It goes from there, and it would help us in terms of bringing people out of their hotels. What was in for them, it was downtown, support the businesses, Flanders businesses everywhere, no matter where you go. As you can tell, I'm not a big fan of opting out. And how come you guys didn't come up with a sort of proposal like we asked you to last meeting? I believe Mr. Norm asked you.
Correct. We have new information that really said we couldn't do that.
Yeah. Curious, Tom?
I would assume that since it was something that we couldn't do, you wouldn't want the town spending money on us drafting something that wouldn't be viable.
Any further comments, anyone?
I've sort of said my piece.
Would you like to make a proposal?
Yeah, someone has to make, you talking about making a motion?
Oh, make a motion.
Yeah, someone has to make a motion to opt out with, and we have to... I think we have to cite reasons why we can't just opt out, is that right?
That's correct. You could probably rely on what's been stated, thank you, on what's been stated in the discussion.
In the discussion, okay.
But for purposes of this, I did, in the draft, leave some blanks. It would probably be a good idea to commit those to writing.
Okay. You handed it to us, right? Sorry, can we go, yeah, can we go, yeah, I buried it. I'll take a motion. I appreciate the spirited discussion, I appreciate the diversity of opinion. I think that's important, it's understandable, this is a, I think, I knew it would be a controversial topic. I don't think it was as contentious as I thought it would be, I know that, I missed the last meeting, I did bring myself up to speed. I'm surprised that more folks maybe weren't at that public meeting, but that's my opinion. A lot of times, people are busy raising their families, and they don't know to be here. They don't know this stuff is going on, and that's where, again, I think we have a greater responsibility.
If someone is going to make a motion, I would suggest, in reviewing this, I would just follow the resolution, the draft resolution.
Okay.
The verbiage of that instead.
Beginning with "whereas"?
Correct.
Okay, nope.
And we have to cite reasons?
That's required in the Act, yes, and as I say, it's...
And those reasons have to not be conflicting with 2129, so I'm anxiously awaiting what our conditions would be.
I'd like to propose a motion, and I have a few reasons. I move that the East Line Zoning Commission vote to permanently opt out of the provision PA 21-29 regarding allowance of accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units, ADUs, pursuant to Section 6F of Public Act 21 to 29, for the following reasons. I feel it is contradictory to our responsibility, as in the state statutes, that we are charged with preserving property values. Two, it gives us no, very little, if any, control over this type of development. Three, it's too general and inappropriate for this town. I welcome any amendments to the motion.
So, I will just comment that I don't know that we have any evidence that this Act would degrade property values. I believe that we do have control with the zoning regulations. And I'm sorry, Norm, what was the third thing you stated?
No control over this type of development.
Yeah.
And too general and inappropriate.
Okay, and again, I personally feel that general and inappropriate.
Yeah.
Like, I don't feel that those items would stand up in any type of case that I would want to defend. You know, I think there have to be concrete things. I don't feel that those are very dependable, but...
Yeah.
Attorney, please, would you like to defend those three?
You know, all it states is that the commission has to state its reasons for the vote on the record.
All right, very good, then.
What about regards to the loosening of restrictions? Because I see this as a loosening of restrictions, at least with regard to this, and that that sort of flies in the face, or runs contrary to good zoning, and good enforcement of zoning.
Again, I would not want to comment on whether the reasons are proper or not.
That's fine.
The statute, the Act doesn't require that.
Can I just, we're going to have a little bit of conversation before the vote here?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, I miss this, and I apologize, I know we're in the middle of a motion here. Attorney's Mark, you are also representing Black Point as well, correct? So, by them requiring to have a sworn affidavit, is that against the state's regulations?
I was not involved in that. I was not involved in that, I have not seen the new regulation. That was done by the Black Point Beach Club Association Zoning Commission and their zoning official.
One of your comments was, the approval process can also require a public hearing. Oh, that was for, I'm sorry, I thought that was for you. So, basically, they adopted it, so it's basically going to be null and void, because they're required to have an affidavit, so they can't do that legally.
As I said, I have not seen it, I wouldn't want to comment on it. We also have to be careful not to reference things that are outside the record.
Understood.
So you're saying the reasons can come afterwards from the record, or we need to cite these reasons?
Well, sir, when...
You have specific with them right now.
If...
I'm sure in the last...
When a court reviews a decision of a zoning commission, it goes one of two ways. The court either looks in the written decision of the commission to see the reasons therefore, or it reviews the record.
Got it, and retrieves them that way.
Correct, correct.
So what court are you talking about? They give them the option to opt out.
No, it's a general principle of how a reviewing court looks at a decision of a land use commission.
But we're having heavy discussion about the reasons.
Correct, correct.
Several of us have reasons. I put down what I thought were those reasons. Maybe you want to reword it a little bit, make it a little more sophisticated, but those are the ones we've been talking about.
I'm sorry, but then if he does rewrite, yeah, excuse me, then if he does rewrite them, I'd like them to come back before the commission, before you do that, so that we can see it. Because I don't feel comfortable voting on something that, you know, could be tweaked and...
I think what he's saying is, the reasons are in the record.
Yeah.
You've all articulated our reasons, and that those reasons are in the record.
You know, attorneys tend to be belt and suspenders, no question. You have, everyone has stated reasons for their positions in the record. The Act does not require something written. All it says is that the commission states upon its records the reasons for such decision. Whatever the commission may decide, I do believe those matters are in the record. Just went to the step of trying to assist with coming up with the draft, if that's what, if that was what the commission decided.
One of my reasons is it would destroy the rural atmosphere of this town. We wouldn't be rural anymore, we'd be intercity.
Do we have a second on Mr. Peck's motion?
I did second it.
You've seconded it already, my apologies. Final discussion, final thoughts before we take a vote. Anybody have anything? All those in favor of opting out signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? So, 4-2-0. Vote carries to opt out.
I would like to propose that we do get together...
Excuse me, gentlemen?
As a subcommittee, and still come up with at least some discussion about how we can do something in this regard, without getting into the statute. Maybe two-family in another zone.
And one of the other three...
Something like that. We might come up with a couple other things.
Sure. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a second, all those in favor, aye? Did you second that yet? Dwyer, Dwyer seconded.